Commissioners Court, Brazos County, will meet in regular session on August the 10th, 2021, 10:00 a.m., in Commissioners' courtroom, County Administration Building, 200 South Texas Avenue, Suite 106. First item on the agenda is the Indication Pledge of Allegiance to the U.S. Texas Flag. I'll leave those. Father, I want to thank you this morning for your love and your mercy. I want to thank you, Father, for all the blessings we have living in this country, that we have the freedoms we have. Father, I ask that you be the leader of our country and our state as we move through all the issues that are going on. Be with us this morning as we make decisions for the county. I ask all these things in your name. Amen.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor to Texas. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Second item on the agenda is call for citizens' input and our concerns.
Judge, if I may. If I may, I want to introduce our newest employee, Ms. Beth Martinez, is new to purchasing. So we've taken around to some, but it was a good opportunity to get everybody to kind of meet her at this time. So we're happy to have her.
Yeah, I know y'all.
I asked her to give a two-minute speech.
Make it fine.
Okay, thanks, Joel. We'll consider and take action on Agenda 3 through 19. Number 3 is proclamation 21-009 declaring August 2021 as Community Health Worker Month for the community health workers and the National Community Health Workers Training Center.
Motion approved.
Motion made seconded, and we've got folks here. I guess I should have got this signed while we were... If y'all sign this, we'll... Y'all come up, Will. Whereas the community health workers are nationally recognized as essential frontline public health workers by government agencies, and they play a key role in advancing health quality, increasing access to care, and reducing health disparities. Whereas improving the health population increases sustainable multi-sector collaborations between healthcare providers, public and state agencies, and their community stakeholders. Whereas the 4,000-plus Texas community health workers and community health worker instructors serve a vital role in improving the health of their communities through community outreach and health education. And whereas Texas was the first state to formally recognize community health workers as a member of the health, public health workforce through the signing of House Bill 1864, and is one of the few states that offer statewide community health worker CHW certification. Whereas Denise Martinez, CHWI-MPH Training Center Manager, leads the effort of the National Community Health Worker Training Center, Texas A&amp;M Public Health, which to date has served over 7,000 trainees. And whereas the National CHW Training Center is housed within the Center for Community Health Development located on Texas A&amp;M University School of Public Health and the 2010 CCHD established the National Community Health Worker Training Center to response to partner with the community needs identified through the research in local area. And whereas the community health workers are being recognized for their passion and dedication in improving the community health. Now therefore be proclaimed, Brazos County Commissioners Court hereby recognizes Community Health Workers and National Community Health Worker Training Center as a Community Health Worker Month, and recognizes contributions of the community health workers through the pandemic and beyond as they improve health relations throughout Brazos County. Proclaim this 10th day of August 2021.
I would like to invite my team to stand up with me since this is not just something that I do alone. The National Community Health Worker Training Center is at the School of Public Health with Texas A&amp;M University. We are very proud to serve our communities, which includes the Brazos County, and we have been diligently working throughout this pandemic to continue serving our community and establishing the capacity building of our communities by providing training to community health workers. So if you're not familiar with community health worker model, we are here locally, and you can ask us, and we would be happy to offer that expertise since it's something that we've already been doing in our community and hope to continue doing onward. So thank you so much for this proclamation. We are glad to be recognized for our hard work, as often, community health workers go unnoticed, and couldn't be prouder of the team that stands behind me today. So thank you.
Well, this has been a tough year for our past year, I guess, for health workers. So thank y'all for everything you do. Oh, do we need to vote on that? I'm sorry. Do I have a motion? A second.
So move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. All right. Thank y'all. Then we will move on to number 4, Resolution 21-013 to adopt the Hart Inter-Civic Verity Voting System.
Move, approve.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 5 is approval of the County Transportation Infrastructure Grant Fund grant reimbursement in the amount of $855,679 used for Merka Road reconstruction.
Move, approve.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 6 is approval requested from Purchasing Department to declare a list of surplus property as salvaged in accordance with the Local Government Code 263.152 and authorized destruction or other means of disposal.
Move, approve.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 7 is approval of contract with Synacor Odyssey for Juvenile Residential Services.
Move, approve.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 8 is approval of contract 21-144 with KB Septic Systems for Septic Maintenance with Brazos County.
Move, approve.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 9 is approval of judges and alternates for the November 2021 election.
Move, approve.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 10 is presentation of Brazos County Proposed Budget for fiscal year 2021-2022. And Irene, I think you're gonna do the presentation this morning.
Good morning, Judge Peters and Commissioners. Today, we're going to present the 2022 Proposed Budget. Judge Peters and I will be kind of tag-teaming this morning. So we'll talk today a little bit about the appraised values and where we ended up after this pandemic. We'll talk a little bit about the proposed budget, the tax rate that's going to be proposed, the debt service that we issued, and where we stand there. We'll also discuss personnel, the compensation, retirement, health insurance, and the general capital improvements. So in terms of the appraised values, in 2019, we were at $19.1 billion. In 2020, the appraised values were $19.7 million. The new improvements that we had over the year, the prior year, were $459.7 million in taxable new properties. So while we expected a downturn during the pandemic, we did have some loss, but that was made up because we have a strong economy that's diversified, and so we did not fare as severely as we expected. So the total funds for the current budget, the 2021 budget, are $267.6 million, and it's increasing by $17.8 million to $285.4 million.
Irene, could you talk into the mic?
Oh, I'm sorry. I forget that I tend to talk loud, or not loud. So in terms of the summarizing all the funds, we are increasing from $267 million to $285 million. And that, the general fund is increasing by 13% to $150 million from $133 million. The Health Endowment Fund is expected to increase from $886,000 to $987. That's the, that fund is the fund that we, we have the tobacco settlement. So that's, that's what that fund is. And the Special Revenue Fund, it's going to decrease 22% from $44 million to $34 million. The grant funds are going to increase by 735% from $3.6 million to $30.2 million. We'll talk a little bit about the grants in terms of, that really is the American Recovery Act. That's why that one's going up as much as it is. Debt Service is going to increase by 6% from $11.3 million to $12.1. The Capital Project Fund is going to decrease from $52.9 million to $34.7 million. The Proprietary Fund will go from $22.2 to $22.6. So we'll talk a little bit more about all these funds as we move along. So now we want to talk a little bit about what a new truth and taxation terminology. Last year, the legislature changed some of the terminology. The old terminology that was called the Effective Tax Rate is now called the No New Revenue Tax Rate. The Effective Maintenance/Operation Tax Rate is now called the No New Operations/Maintenance and Tax Rate. The Rollback Tax is now called Voter Approved Tax Rate. Those are significant when you're going to set the tax rate. I'll explain what the No New Revenue Tax Rate. The definition of the No New Tax Rate is the, No New Tax Rate is a rate that will approximately bring in the same amount of revenue that it did last year in comparison in properties, on property tax in both years. So the 2021 No New Revenue Tax Rate is .483626. So when you compare the 2020 current tax rate, it is currently at 4.95 per 100 valuation. The No New Revenue Tax Rate is .483626. The proposed 2021 tax rate is 4935. So the reason that we call it 2021 is because it's this calendar year. So while we're, the 2021 tax rate, we call it that, it's because it's this calendar year, but it funds the 2022 budget. So when you're looking at setting the rate, you're comparing the current rate, the proposed rate, to the No New Revenue Tax Rate. So a little bit of history about where we have been. Since 2017, for two years, in '17 and '18, the tax rate was set at 4.85. If you look at the M&amp;O rate, it was able, we were able to keep it steady for several years. In 2018, or 2019, it was increased to 4975, and that allowed us to have a little bit more room in the M&amp;O rate, which is 4475. So the proposed 2021 rate is now 4935, which is what we're going to talk about setting the rate this year. We normally just go four places out, but this year, I think we decided to go the full six places out, which we are allowed to do. So the property tax funds, it makes up 61% of our revenues. So that's why it's so significant that we talk a little more in depth about it. So the No New Revenue Tax Rate is .48626. We're proposing a property tax rate for 2021 of 4935. The voter-approved tax rate, which was, used to be called the Rollback Tax Rate, that is at .510899. So the No New Revenue M&amp;O Tax Rate is 438233. The proposed M&amp;O Tax Rate is 442257, and then our debt rate is .051243. In 2020, the Commissioners' Court issued SMCOs for various capital projects that we'll talk about in just a little bit. For 2022, the total debt service is going to be 98.9, with the principal being $81.3 million. Interest, if we were to pay all of this, pay the debt down, would be $17.6 million. The FY 2022 annual payment that we'll make by the end of 2022 will be $11 million, $11.1 million, with a principal and interest at 8.1 and 2.9. This is what we all like to talk a little bit about because we know that our staff is working really hard. Staff makes up 53% of the general fund. These are some of the additions that we added. So there's two pretrial bond supervision positions that were, are included in the budget, and that's to cover all the increased load that they've had in the pretrial bond supervision department. There are two positions in the American Rescue Plan, a full-time and a part-time clerk three in the tax office. The tax office is seeing an increase in traffic. We thought that they would not have an increase in traffic, but it seems like they've had a lot of people buying cars, so they're busy. So we're adding a clerk three to that department. Additionally, we're adding a network engineer and a PC specialist in the IT department to, we have invested a lot of time and effort in software and hardware to help keep our departments from having to add staff. So we've added better software. So the IT department is in need of some additional staff, and that's why we added those two. In the HR department, we're adding an assistant. When we converted to the new financial system, we wanted more from the financial system, but that requires that we enter more information so that we can, in fact, gather that information. So we have one additional staff in the Human Resources Department. In the Facility Services Department, we're adding a supervisor of custodians and an assistant director. As we built out, we just, we've done everything that we can do with the staff that we have. However, with more buildings spread out, we just needed additional staff as well. In the District Attorney's Office, we're going to add two positions, administrative attorney and investigator. The district attorney went out to determine that his caseload, and he felt like he needed more, more staff. And during the pandemic, he saw an increase in child protective service needs, and so we're adding an administrative attorney and investigator to assist and make sure that we can protect our children. In the Expo Complex, we're going to add a senior manager and four part-time attendants. The exposition center experienced, they did shut down for a couple of months, but once they geared back up, they didn't see a decrease in activity, they actually saw an increase. And so we're adding those five positions. In the courthouse security, there's been an increased need for more officers on the floor. We have a lot of courts going on, and just the level of security that's needed has increased, and so we're going to add a courthouse security officer. In the records management department, we're adding a clerk scanner. That position was, when we moved into the building, into this building, we have a gym. And so the district clerk came and asked for a position, and the records management department will get this position in order to help him clear out all those files that are in the gym. I know a lot of people have asked for the gym to be open, and it can't be open until we get all those files scanned. So that's what that position is for. In Roden Bridge, we're going to add a right-of-way agent and a flagger. The right-of-way agent, what we, what we, the county engineer has come to the court and asked for a right-of-way agent because the land yields, the land negotiations are much more difficult, and they're time-consuming, and so we're adding an additional right-of-way agent to maybe facilitate that process, get some of the land that we need to, problems that we have. So that's what the right-of-way agent is for. And then a flagger as well was just needed. Those are all the additions. These are just the highlights, and then there are some reductions in force. Four, in the District Attorney's Crime Fund, they were part-time positions that he was no longer using. And then three, pretrial coordinators, there was two full-time and a part-time. This was an office that we thought a couple of years ago that we might need, so we created them, these three positions, but we have since found out that we don't need this, these three positions. So in summary, we added 21 positions, reduced seven, and so that brings our total positions to 964 from 950. Included in this budget is a cost of living adjustment across the board for 3%, and a merit pool of 1%. In terms of retirement, the current rate is 15.75%. In 2022, this budget includes an increase to 16.75%. The required rate for 2021 was 14.06, and it has increased, and that is partly due to the pandemic and the losses that we incurred. But as the stock market has rebounded, we expect that, while this time, the required rate increase, that it'll level out in the next five to 10 years. So the projected, at 16.75, the retirement rate contribution, that the projected funding rate will increase to 85.7%. In terms of healthcare, this is one of, one of the benefits that we all enjoy as county employees. The costs have been increasing over the years, and we do have an employee clinic, which has helped reduce some of the costs, but we're still seeing an increase across the board, like many organizations across the country. So for 2022, Brazos County is going to have a yearly contribution of $15,912 for each category, employee-only, child, employee and spouse, employee and family as well. So we have a wellness program, and if the employee participates in the program, they get a $60 discount. So employee-only will be $936. That's a yearly amount. If you don't participate in the program, it'll be $1656 per year. Employee and child will go from 48 to 4968. Employee and spouse, $6,312. If you participate in the wellness program, it's $7,032. And then the employee and family, which is the most expensive healthcare insurance that we, that, it goes from $8712 to $9432. In terms of capital projects, this is the certificates of obligation that were issued in October 2020, included many projects. For 2022, the projects that are slated to be completed next year are $135,000 for facility services. We bought the building with these funds, but there's additional work that needs to be done, so that's what the $135,000 is for. The jail kitchen, we started this project last year, or this year. We're, we expect that we've got $1.5 million left to go. Roof repairs was also one of the projects that we wanted to complete with the certificates of obligation. We have set aside $1.3 million for repairing the jail. Further down, you'll see that we also have another $5 million set aside because those are not, those are roofs that we haven't yet determined what the cost is going to be and the equipment. We're still in the process of doing that. At the time when we had this hail damage, we expected that the cost would be somewhere between $8 million to $25 million. So as we go further along, we'll talk a little bit more about additional money that we have. Included in this certificate obligation is a building for Precinct 1, the JP and Constable, at $3.2 million. There's road, road money of $2.6 million. There's roads, road money of 2.6 million. There is also heavy equipment for the Roden Bridge Department of $860,000. Included in the capital projects is building improvements of 4.2 million. There is some courthouse security enhancements for the entrance of the courthouse that we're rolling over funds from this year to next year's because we were not able to complete that project. There's $3.7 million in roof money in just the capital improvement fund and that's funding comes from the insurance claims that we've made. And those also have not been allocated to the specific roofs and/or equipment that was damaged. Included in the capital projects is computer hardware. There's a backup storage refresh for the IT department of 144,320. Retrofit of the election equipment that's required by Senate Bill 598 for the elections Included is a software of 3.4 million. One of the sheriff's highest priority item was a law enforcement policy management software that will allow them to manage all the policies and keep up with all the procedures that they have to do. And that's a total cost for the admin and the jail of 110,015. There's OpEx Falcon and Red Scanner for the tax office to help them scan of 156,190. Included is a $3.2 million for the financial software enhancements and consultation to improve the financial system that we, there's some enhancements that we would like for the software. So that's what the 3.2 million is for. Included are, for equipment other is a safety ladders for the facilities department, a body scanner for the jail of $160,000. It was also a top priority for the sheriff. There's equipment, emergency equipment for the commissioners' court. These are all the, there's different times of the year that we find out some equipment has failed or, and that's what this money is set aside for. Equipment for roads and bridge, there is 175,000 set aside for the Roden Bridge Department to get a boom mower that, to replace the boom mower. For Roden Bridge, we also set aside $5.2 million for roads, capital roads. And finally, we get to vehicles, which is always a hot topic for us. So we have in FY '22, we have $1.4 million. This is a little bit more complicated because, because of the pandemic, the commissioners' court set aside money for various equipment, one of which was vehicles. We also, this year, are planning to buy some computer hardware. All of these things we don't expect to get this year, but, so we're going to fund it in 12, in 2022 so that we have the funds to cover that. So let me show you what we've done or you've done. So we purchased some vehicles in 2021 and they are, we don't expect to get them. These, we ordered two for the county attorney and one for the district attorney. Those we did receive. So we've got, included in the FY '22, we've got the equipment cost for those two, those These vehicles, these seven were ordered, but they were not received. So we're going to have to pay for these in FY 2022. There's one vehicle slated for the light fleet department. That's Ken Chadwick. The sheriff's office has four vehicles. Constable two and four both have one apiece and that makes up the four. So this is vehicles and equipment that we are going to order and we expect to order in FY 2022. One for light fleet, three for facility services, three for the sheriff's office, one for the expo complex and four for Roden Bridge, which is a total of 12. So that concludes our presentation for the fiscal year 2022 proposed budget. It's available at www.brazoscountytx.gov. As soon as, well, just in a little while after we get finished with this presentation or this meeting, you just have to click the review Brazos County proposed budget. And then afterwards, we'll distribute the packets for everyone.
It's a lot, too, sorry, but y'all were all sitting in on budget discussions, you know, throughout the budget process, so you're familiar with this stuff that's been put in. And I appreciate all the input and the help that we had on this budget, our proposal. So I believe we didn't need to take any action on the presentation, but do you, do you have anything else?
No, I just want to thank Nina Payne, who is the budget analyst. Without her, I would not be able to get the, this huge-
Yeah, y'all both-
-project. There's many people besides Nina. The otters office also helps us put together the revenue portion of the budget. Marcia and Colton have been instrumental and Cheryl and Aubrey as well, as well as the commissioners' court.
Yeah.
You've been patient with us during this process, so we, we appreciate that.
Well, y'all do a great job.
Thank you.
Certainly do.
Judge, I think it's important that we announce the public hearing.
We'll do that. That's, that's coming up. We will.
We do want a public input?
That's correct. That's the next item.
Please pay attention to our public hearing date and times.
Right. Okay, so-
Item 11.
Yes, that's, that's the next item-
Yes, sir.
-on the agenda. So, so we will, we can have discussion. I mean, we already, Irene has shown us what the new, no new revenue rate is, the voter approve rate and what the, this proposed budget is 4935, which is a reduction in the rate. It's an increase in the tax because if your, if your home stayed the same value, it'd actually be a reduction, but we know that values went up, so it will, according to budget, it will increase taxes, but it's a reduction in the rate. So I think then probably unless there's any further discussion, I would make them, I would move to propose a tax rate of .4935 for the 2021 tax year to establish, wait a minute, that's not the correct one, I don't think. Maybe I didn't get, I had it with the date and time in it. Did you, the motion with the date and time in it?
Because the proposed rate is higher than the no new revenue rate, that necessitates a public hearing. So when you propose budget, I would ask that you make a motion to set the proposed budget public hearing to be set Tuesday, August 31st. And then the 2021 tax rate, tax increase to be set at 1:45 here in the commissioners' courtroom, 200 South Texas Avenue, Suite 106, Bryan, Texas.
Hearing this, will you accept a motion?
Yes.
I'd like to offer a motion that the public hearing be set for Tuesday, August 31st, 2021, hearing the 2022 proposed budget at 1:30 PM.
And the proposed rate.
And the proposed tax increase as explained by Irene, our budget officer, for 1:45 PM. And that would be the 2021 tax increase.
Check it. Okay, so the motion, I think-
You need to state the rate in the motion.
Yes, that's what I was fixing to say. So .4935 is the proposed tax rate. Is that included in your motion?
It is.
Okay.
I was waiting for your numbers.
Okay. .4935 is the proposed tax rate. And the hearing will be on Tuesday, August 31st, 2021 at 1:30 for the budget. And then the tax increase is at 1:45, 15 minutes later.
Here in the courtroom.
Here, yes. 200 South Texas Avenue.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries.
Again, we thank you Irene for all your hard work and Ms. Nina. You all really do a great job each year.
Thank you.
We will move on to number 12, consider and vote on the FY 2022 proposed salaries and allowances for elective county and precinct officials.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 13 is approval of the revised final plat of Hunter's Crossing Estates, Phase 1, Block 1, lots 1 through 18, 27.01 acres, recorded in volume 16126, page 124, official public records Brazos County, GH Coleman survey, A10, Francis Henderson survey, A20, City of Bryan ETJ, Brazos County, Texas, site located precinct 2. Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 15.
14.
14, sorry. Commissioners Court minutes for the following dates. A, 21-
Move approval A through G?
Second.
Motion made, seconded, to approve A through G. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 15 is budget amendments, budget amendments FY 2021, 43.1 through 43.6.
Move approval of budget amendments.
Motion made, seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 16 is personnel change status.
Move approval of A and B, employment and separation, B, personnel action forms.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, to approve A and B. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 17 is payment of claims. Claims to be paid by Brazos County, claim number 8109128 through claim number 8109302 and claim number 9002602 through claim number 9002674.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made, seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number, let's skip down to number 20 is acknowledgement of an order appointing the county auditor that was done by the district judges.
Move approval.
We don't have to approve it, it's just an acknowledgement.
Oh, acknowledgement.
It's an acknowledgement. I was going to congratulate Katie. I don't see her in here, but-
That's another person who does a great job.
She certainly does.
Yeah.
So then 21 is juvenile directors' report on detention population. Linda.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. We currently have 34 juveniles in detention, 28 males, six females, four in medical isolation due to protocol and 21 on electronic monitor.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number 22, Sheriff's Report on Inmate Population. Sheriff.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. 555 this morning. That's 482 men, 73 women. We have 50 on electronic monitoring with three pending.
Have you noticed any increase in the COVID infections? We're not getting those numbers anymore.
Yeah, we currently have two positives. Those were both caught as part of our process and recovery.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, how about staff? Have we had any staff?
We have, we have one current.
Is that this long term?
No, that's one new.
One new. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Sheriff. 23 is announcement of interest items and possible future agenda topics. Hearing none. With number 24 is call for citizens' input and our concerns. Hearing none. We will go back up to number 18 and convene an executive session pursuant to the following. And I, I don't think the, the lease or real estate, did, Counselor, did you tell me that we didn't need to meet on that one?
The real estate, we didn't get the documents to be arrived.
Okay.
Probably have, but they're complete next week.
Okay, so we'll convene an executive session for A, Texas Government Code 551.0785 for deliberations involving medical or psychiatric records for, of a county employee. And we'll need Commissioners Court and Jennifer and Rihanna. Is there anybody else that needs to, oh, Counselors, yeah, we need those in there, too. Josh Sanders? Okay. And time is 10:47.